Good morning, welcome to session six of our Bible study today. We are on our third session of biblical narrative. And the narrative we are looking at is, are the Gospels, but also we are looking at parables, which obviously are in the Gospels, but they deserve some individual comment about how they are constructed. So glad to see everybody here this morning, and let's go ahead and get started with a word of prayer. Gracious Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to remember and reminisce on the stories of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, but also on the teaching method he most often used. We thank you for this opportunity to be together in Jesus' name, amen. So Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John are what we refer to as the Gospels. They contain probably some of our most favorite stories that we find in the Bible. They are the earliest accounts of Jesus' life and teaching, but often we do not take into full scope the literary artistry that they contain. And of course, we've mentioned this before, I believe it's been since we started our study of the narrative, but it needs to be reinforced today. You have four Gospels, and they generally tell the same story, but not specifically. And certainly that is true of the Gospel of John, which has a completely different timeline and different understanding of Jesus' relationship to Jerusalem. In the synoptics, he goes to Jerusalem, well, as a child, but he goes once as an adult, and we know how that ended. And in John's Gospel, he's in and out of Jerusalem so much that it almost seems more like his home in some ways than Palestine or Bethlehem does. So let's proceed, and we'll have our first video in just a few minutes. The word Gospel comes from the Old English God spell. It means good tidings. That comes from a Greek word which means good news, and that's how we often have referred to Gospels.
And it's the Good News Bible, too.
Yes, yes. By the way, I'm trying not to go down too many of these rabbit holes, but I've got to say this one. Barton College is affiliated with Christian Church Disciples of Christ. While I was attending there, I had six religion professors, one of which was Roger Bullard. Roger Bullard was the Greek professor and all sorts of other courses that he taught. Roger Bullard was one of the translators of the Good News for Modern Man Bible. I believe if I remember correctly, he actually worked on the Old Testament, which automatically tells you not only did he speak Greek, he spoke Hebrew. And I always thought he was a wonderful professor. Sometimes he left me completely confused, but it was that good kind of confusion. I got a lot of that, but I sure didn't get all of that, so anyway. Gospel refers to the announcement that Jesus has brought the reign of God to our world through His life, death, and resurrection from the dead. Again, the four Gospels are Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John. They can be described as theological biographies of Jesus that focus on the announcement of the Gospel. Now, I'll be honest with you, there are some of the things in our study today that I'm not 100% in sync with from our guys at thebibleproject.com, but I'll say this, you've heard the expression, "We're on the same page." I think we're on the same page, but just not on the same paragraph. But I think that's probably as good a description as you can give, a theological biography. But of course, you immediately know upon hearing that, that they're more than that, and they are more than that. They are based on the eyewitness testimonies, the apostles. However, they are not merely historical records, amen. These accounts are designed to advance a claim that will challenge the reader's thinking and behavior. The Gospel, well, before I say that, and we pointed this out already, I said to you, the Gospel of Mark, to me, is written in some ways like an evangelical sermon, and it ends the way it does with kind of leaving you hanging, because it's almost as if the author is asking you to make a decision on what you believe at that point. And that's what a good evangelical sermon does. It makes you make a decision about going forward or not, so there you go. He continues by saying, "The Gospel of Narratives have two main goals: to faithfully represent the story of Jesus, the crucified and risen Jesus of Nazareth is the Messiah of Israel and the true Lord of the world; number two, to persuade the reader to acknowledge Jesus as Lord and become his disciples." And what they're saying is that's true of all four Gospels, and I would agree, it is. It is most, again, I think it's most seen in Mark. The others, I mean, Luke reads scholarly, it's more historic, in some ways Matthew is too. You have all sorts of theories about the writing of the Gospels. I tend to stick with the one that I learned 40-plus years ago, and that still is the majority thought. The Gospel of Mark was written first, that it is purported to be by John Mark, who did have a passing association with the apostles in Jerusalem, but probably picked up his, probably attained the ability to write that story by listening to those apostles. You know, some have said, "Well, it's the memoirs of Peter, maybe." It could be the memoirs of all of them, and as well as, we know he traveled somewhat with Barnabas and Paul, and Paul preached the Gospel, so anyway. The second Gospel, we believe, is Matthew, who used Mark as one of his sources. But he also used something that has come to be referred to as the Q source. Q stands for Correl or something like, it's a German word which means source. And that's where you get all these quotes that Matthew seems to include in his Gospel. The Gospel of Luke, timeline-wise, seems to have been written up to maybe a decade later than the Gospel of Matthew, but it's still within the first 100 years. And we tend to think that Luke may have been aware of Matthew, whether he used it as a source or not, we don't know. He definitely also had access to Q, since again, much of what we refer to as the Q material seems to be quotes from Jesus. It could have been a manuscript or scroll that basically was something like the saves of Jesus, that somebody had written down somewhere along the way. And he also uses Mark as a source. And then the Gospel of John may well not have been written until early 2nd century, so that would place it after 100 A.D. Now, all of these are speculations. There are no copyright dates on any manuscript of the Gospel ever found, and so, and most of what we have, I don't want to say all, because you never say never, but most of what we have are not original manuscripts. They're copies of originals, or maybe copies of copies of originals, because you know what happens when you keep a book around your house for a couple of hundred years and it begins to deteriorate? Well, it's not like scrolls were made out of special magic stuff that never deteriorates. And if you saw the scrolls that these translators translate from, you'd be amazed that they get anything out of them, because they got holes in them, the edges are tattered, sometimes they're torn into multiple pieces. Anyway, you get the idea. So then they ask the question, "Why the title of Gospels?" Well, good news fits as easily as anything that we could imagine, but as we were just saying, Mark, we think, was the first of these documents, and the first verse of Mark reads thus, "The beginning of the good news about Jesus, the Messiah, and the Son of God." So literally, one of the first words in the first verse of the first Gospel is Gospel. So there you go. The Gospels are a kind of ancient biography, and, uh-oh, didn't mean for that to happen. Because the Gospels, or the style of writing of a Gospel is not limited to these four. There are other theological biographies of other religious leaders. But it says, "Although this is a commonly recognized category of literature, biographies in the ancient world had different strategies and aims. Take a look at some key differences. Ancient biographies represented representations of the essence or meaning of a key figure's life, story, and message. They were not just a chronological play-by-play of life events." And you've read those kinds of biographies before. Some of them just seem to be, "And then in 1843, and then in 1843 at the end of the year, and then in 1844," it's almost just like a recounting. And then others will tell us about the events of a person's life, but expound upon them. Number two, "They were not archival or unbiased accounts; rather, they are intended to be persuasive documents." Number three, "They were aimed at persuading the reader to emulate the figure, not just to gain knowledge about that individual's life." Let me do this real quick, and then we will watch the video. Four unique features of the Gospel Narratives. Number one, they are full of references, all of them. They are full of references to the Hebrew Bible. Now, this tells us two things. The writers of the Gospels knew Hebrew scriptures fairly well, or at least well enough to be able to pull them out as they do. And I'm not going to go through this listing of all the different Old Testament scriptures that they're quoting. Number two, direct and indirect claims on Jesus' authority. The Gospel authors sometimes make explicit claims about Jesus' identity, such as the one I just read you from Mark. More often, they shape the reader's perception of Jesus through indirect means. And you remember, I believe it's in the Gospel of John, where John the Baptist sends his disciples to ask Jesus, "Are you the One?" And Jesus' response is basically to say, "You see the miracles I work and the way I teach, would you be..." And that's kind of a feeling you get in a lot of places in the Gospel. It's not the preacher pounding the pulpit saying, "Believe," but it's a representation of what happened, and then it's kind of asking you to make a decision. Number three, crucifixion and resurrection are the climax of the story. Every single Gospel spends an important amount of time on the last week of Jesus' life on earth. So there you go. How important is that holy week? Well, in some of the Gospels, it seems as if almost half the Gospel is the story of Jesus' crucifixion and resurrection. Number four, different arrangements to emphasize unique facets of Jesus' character. And I'm going to read these if you want to get these later, because I'm trying to get through this fast. But we talked about this last week, four Gospels are not all trying to say the same thing. That's why they end up not saying the same thing. They have different elements which they consider important, so they arrange the stories in the way that enhance the point they're trying to make. Matthew portrays Jesus as a greater-than-Moses figure. He is the King of heaven and earth. Mark emphasizes the mystery and misunderstanding caused by Jesus' announcement of the kingdom. He is portrayed as the unexpected Messiah. Now, don't misunderstand there, they were expecting a Messiah. But what they're saying, Mark is saying, is the Messiah that arrived wasn't the one they were expecting. And we see that over and over again, really, in all four Gospels, that they seem to be confused, because he's not riding a white war stallion and ready to lead a revolt. Luke highlights how Jesus brings the Gospels to the nation, how appropriate that is, because Luke was not originally Jewish. So he sees Jesus as not the Savior of Israel, but he immediately sees Jesus as the Savior of the world. And John introduces Jesus as Israel's God become human, presenting signs that demonstrate the truth of his messian and claim and his offer of eternal life for any that will trust in him. And John was having to deal with some, we feel, because of the lateness with which the Gospel may have been written, John was having to deal with some problems that were already surfacing in the church about, is Jesus fully human? Is Jesus fully divine? Is there some percentage of each, of course, to find the orthodoxy which we travel with today? We always talk about him being fully human, fully divine.
There are four books in the Bible that are ancient biographies of Jesus: The Gospel According to Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John.
And while individual stories about Jesus and his teachings are familiar to many people, these books have way more to offer if we read them from beginning to end, and see how they connect Jesus' story into the overall biblical storyline.
So let's talk about how to read the Gospel. First of all, this word Gospel, what does it mean?
Well, it means good news.
Which raises the question, good news about what?
Well, in Mark's Gospel, Jesus enters the story announcing that, "The time is fulfilled. God's kingdom has come near, so turn around and trust this good news."
So the good news is about God's kingdom arriving, but what does that mean?
Well, it's Jesus' way of summarizing the whole biblical story that leads up to himself.
The whole story. Okay, give me the short version.
Well, the story begins with God creating a good world, and then appointing humanity as his representatives to rule it. But then, the humans rebel over and over, leading to a world of violence and death.
That's a problem.
But God's committed to making it work, so he chooses Abraham and his family to restart the project. Then through Moses, God brings the family into a garden land of abundance, so that he can restore all of the nations through them.
Right, Israel becomes a kingdom, with amazing kings like David, but eventually Israel rebels too, and it leads them into destruction.
But Israel's prophets said that God wasn't giving up. He was going to personally come and restore Israel, so that his justice and peace could spread to all nations and all creation. This hope was called the Kingdom of God.
And that's what Jesus said he was bringing to Israel.
Yes, Jesus' good news is about God's kingdom, the new creation that was arriving to restore humanity to their role as God's partners in ruling the world. This is why the Gospel has so many stories about Jesus liberating people from death and disease, along with all of his teachings about generosity to the poor, or forgiveness, and loving your enemies.
He was inviting people to live in God's new world.
Exactly. And so this is one of the main goals of the Gospel, to show how Jesus is bringing the whole biblical story to its fulfillment.
So that's why the Gospel authors are constantly appealing to the Hebrew scriptures while telling the story of Jesus.
Yeah, like when Jesus is born in Bethlehem, Matthew reminds us that this was anticipated by the prophet Micah.
And he directly quotes from Micah.
Yeah, these direct quotes are really common, but more often, the Gospel authors weave biblical phrases into the story without telling you, so you can discover it for yourself. Like when Jesus is baptized, and God announces from the skies...
"You are my son, my beloved; with you I am well pleased."
Now, if you do some digging, you'll find that God's statement blends together phrases from three biblical texts, to identify Jesus as the royal son of David, the seed of Abraham, and the servant who's going to suffer for the sins of his people.
Whoa, that is subtle.
Yes, and the Gospel accounts do this on every page. Every book is constantly showing how all of the biblical stories about Abraham, or Moses, and David, and all the prophets, all of it points forward to Jesus.
Now, why are there four different accounts? Wouldn't one be enough?
Well, the diversity is on purpose. Each of the four Gospel authors has shaped and arranged their stories about Jesus differently, so they can emphasize different things about him. Matthew presents Jesus as a greater Moses, and so he's grouped Jesus' teachings into five large blocks, just like the five books of the Torah. Luke highlights how Jesus is God's royal servant from the Book of Isaiah, who brings God's light to the nations. Mark presents Jesus as a new start for humanity, bringing the mystery of God's new creation crashing into the present. And John focuses on Jesus' claim, "To be Yahweh, the God of Israel, become human; to do for us what we could never do for ourselves."
Those are really different from each other, but they all tell the same basic story: a man from the region of Galilee, teaching this good news, but who's ultimately crucified as a criminal.
Yes, all four books of the Gospel are showing how the arrival of God's kingdom through Jesus led him up to the cross, where he was enthroned as the King of God's new world.
He's given a robe, a crown, and a scepter.
Right. And as Jesus suffers the consequences of humanity's rebellion, he's showing that the power of God's kingdom comes through his love and self-sacrifice. And when he's raised from the dead, we're watching the dawn of the new creation.
So the Gospel authors don't just want their readers to know about the good news of God's kingdom, they want them to become a part of it.
Yes, the Gospel is designed to persuade us to trust and follow Jesus, so that we can participate in the new creation that he began.
Sorry to our viewing audience, I finished up the Gospel Narratives, and we are now talking about the Parables of Jesus, which are unique teaching stories that sometimes can seem very simple, but they also can seem very complex. Part of this is us. What seems incredibly clear at one stage of life no longer seems clear as we age. What you bring to every parable you read is your life experience. For good or for bad, your life experience will always influence the way in which you interpret things. The parables, just like the Gospels, just like the other narrative, just like the poetry, are all from a different culture. They have different cultural norms surrounding them at the time of their original telling and recording than we do. What seems blatantly obvious to us may not have been to them, and vice versa. There are things that were blatantly obvious to them which we may not get. We've all had enough Sunday School that we know that the Samaritans were not very well thought of. But that's not a very powerful statement, is it? Now, as I've said either in here or upstairs sometime, you think of the worst epithet, the worst name-calling that you, would just shock you, well, that's what Samaritan really means. They didn't say Samaritan, they said Samaritans. And that's a whole different word, isn't it? Okay.
But then we say the Good Samaritan.
Yeah, yeah. And Jesus was saying that, and people were shocked. And in one version of that story, excuse me, in the version of that story that's in Luke, you will remember, he is having a discussion with a religious leader, and the religious leader can't even bring himself to say the word. He says, "The one who stopped and helped." He didn't say Samaritan, because if he had, it probably would have burned his lips to say, "The Samaritan did the right thing." Okay. So, Jesus' parables are found in all four of the Gospels. I would point out that there are, they're almost really more like teaching stories in the Gospel of John. They're not what we consider the classic parables. In Greek, of course, that word para is parabole. Para means alongside, bole means to set. Therefore, the word parabole refers to something that is set alongside another for comparison and contrast. The meaning of our English word parable doesn't allow, quite allow us to understand what Jesus' parables are all about. Let's take a look at the definition that you find in the Webster's Dictionary. Let's see, could you turn that air off? Here is the definition from Webster's. "Parable: a usually short fictitious story that illustrates a moral attitude or religious principle. The definition views parables as illustrations or explanations relating to morality or religious truth. It assumes that there is a basic abstract idea that the parable illustrates." That doesn't capture how Jesus used these parables. Modern preaching further contributes to this misunderstanding. The goal of preaching today is to take the listener with a desire to learn from a place of non-understanding to comprehension. Therefore, preachers often utilize these illustrations and take something unclear and make it more clear and relatable through the story. However, parables are more than short fictitious stories that Jesus used to clarify his point. There is a huge difference between me saying, "Let me tell you a quick story which I hope will make something clear," and, "Let me tell you a quick story which I hope will cause you to struggle for several days, so that eventually you come to an understanding." Now, that's a whole different ballgame, isn't it? But that's what the parables really are. They were not like the sayings of Confucius, or of, of course, those are confusing sometimes too. But the idea is, I'm not giving you an answer on a platter. I'm giving you a way to try and work it out, and it may work, or it may not, but it's kind of now up to you rather than me. Parables are not moralistic tales. The parable of the Good Samaritan is often assumed to be a moralistic tale, because the Levite didn't stop, the priest didn't stop, but the Samaritan stops. Now, we've watched enough cowboy movies to know which one of them was wearing a white hat. But remember, in the story, does Jesus condemn those individuals? He does not. He does not affirm them, but he doesn't condemn them. He does affirm the actions of the Samaritan. Many would summarize the passage as a story about being a good person who doesn't neglect the hurting, but this simplistic summary neglects the actual context and content of the passage. What is actually going on here? First, notice that it begins with a Torah scholar debating about the Greatest Commandment with Jesus. about the Greatest Commandment with Jesus. He wants to undermine Jesus' authority by asking the question, "Who is my name?" Jesus tells the story of the Good Samaritan, of a Samaritan, someone who had been considered despicable by the scholar. And in the story, the Samaritan is the heroic figure. It is precisely not a story about being a good person. It is a story meant to challenge our assumptions that we are good people and that they are bad people. And that is a much more complex idea because every one of us knows there has been a point in our life where no matter how many good things we have done, we've done something horrible or left undone something much needed, which is what the scholar and the Levite did. They left undone something much needed. That's a lot harder to dismiss than saying, "Well, you know, I'm like the Samaritan because I would stop. Would you?" You know? You're talking about a life-endangering situation for yourself. And the context of walking on a road out in the middle of the wilderness is way different from being on a city street and trying to decide whether to approach someone or not, when there are people all around you and the witness they're giving to you is, "Well, I'm not doing anything about this." You know, and you immediately say, "Well, I'm off the hook because nobody else is doing anything, so I don't need to do anything." That parable is not one to hear and then immediately classify and go on to the next one. That's a parable to sit and struggle with. Why did the Samaritan stop? He almost surely knew this guy was Jewish. And believe me, the Samaritans felt about the Jews the way the Jews felt about the Samaritans. You imagine him thinking, "I don't really want to stop for this guy because if circumstances were different, he would cuss at me under his breath." Parables are not theological lessons, amen. They are not trying to teach us some key theological point. I know that we feel like they do teach key theological points. But in the original telling of these stories, I do not believe that's what Jesus had in mind. You know, I jokingly said, "Jesus was teaching." It's Paul and others that come along and say, "You know, these teachings have implication about the way God is, the way Jesus is, and the way we are, and so we ought to study them." Jesus was using them for the moment. By the way, I think you can assume, as I assume, that these teaching stories were not told once and then put away. Jesus undoubtedly repeated them multiple times because his audience changed regularly. And so therefore, he had plenty to say. And tomorrow, he might build on them. What we've got is probably as close to the finished version as it got. He may have been much more sparse with his words originally. We don't know. We have no idea how many times he might have told them. The main point of the parable, Jesus' entire mission, is to announce and inaugurate the Kingdom of God as the climax of the covenant story between God and Israel, the arrival of God's kingdom. Both confronted the Israel of Jesus' day and comforted them after their long period of exile and oppression. Think of all those parables that start with that wonderful phrase, "The Kingdom of God is like..." And of course, most of those are in Matthew, but those are not the only places that you, that is not the only place that you find them. All right. Let's stop there and, uh-oh.
Jesus of Nazareth was a master teacher, and some of his most well-known teachings are told in short stories called parables.
Yeah, like, "The Kingdom of Heaven is like a merchant who was looking for pearls. And when he found the ultimate pearl, he sold everything so that he could buy it."
Must have been some pretty amazing pearl.
Or, "The Kingdom of God is like a tiny mustard seed that a farmer planted in his garden. It grew and became a huge tree, and birds came to perch in its branches."
And that's a beautiful image, but what does it mean?
Exactly. Jesus didn't tell parables to make everything clear. Rather, he wanted to provoke the imagination and invite people to see what God is doing in the world from a new perspective.
So let's talk about how to read the parables of Jesus. Now, there's many great teachers that throughout history have used stories to teach students about morality, religion, philosophy.
But Jesus didn't use his parables to teach abstract religious or moral ideals. He said that his parables were about himself and his mission.
His mission, which was to announce that the Kingdom of God was arriving on earth as it is in heaven.
Right. So in Jesus' day, the Israelites were ruled by the Roman Empire. But their scriptures promised that one day, their God would come to rule his people as king. And so many Israelites wanted to revolt against Rome and fight for their freedom.
And this is what some people thought of as the Kingdom of God.
Exactly. But Jesus was a poor, traveling prophet, healing the sick, inviting people to follow him. And he said that this was the arrival of God's kingdom.
And that didn't fit people's expectations.
Right. And so Jesus used some parables to help people imagine that his small movement was the arrival of God's kingdom.
Oh, yeah, like the parable that the Kingdom of God is yeast hidden in a lump of dough. And you might not see its influence, but it's going to change everything.
Jesus also told parables about the upside-down values of God's kingdom, about how the least important people in the world are actually the most important people to God, especially those who are poor and of low status.
Yeah, like the parable about the business owner who hired workers throughout the day, in the morning, later in the day, and even towards the end of the day. And when it was time to pay everyone, he paid them all the same wage.
Right, Jesus is showing how money and status are irrelevant to God, who offers his generous mercy to everybody.
Now, not all of the parables have happy endings. Some are really intense.
Yes, Jesus stood in the tradition of Israel's prophets, who also told parables to criticize Israel's leaders because they mistook their kingdom for God's. So Jesus warned the leaders of his day. If they don't accept his offer of God's kingdom, they're headed for destruction.
Yeah, like the parable of the landowner, who built a wonderful vineyard, and he expects it to produce fruit.
Yes, Jesus gets this parable from the prophet Isaiah, but then he adapts it.
Right, and so the landowner appoints managers to take care of this vineyard. And at harvest, he sends servants to collect the fruit, but those managers kill the servants.
And so the landowner sends his own son to confront the managers, and they kill him too. And so Jesus asks the people around him, "What do you all think this landowner should do?"
Oh, he's going to punish those managers and hire new ones.
Jesus knew that if Israel kept on their current path, they would be destroyed by Rome. And so in parables like this, he's forcing people to make a decision about his offer of God's kingdom. Are people going to reject him, ignore him, or trust and follow him?
Now, if this message of God's kingdom is so important, why cloak it in parables? Why not be more clear?
Well, through riddles and parables, Jesus could make really bold claims that revealed truth to people who were open-minded.
For those who have ears to hear, they could ponder it and go deeper.
But the parables would also conceal his message from those who were against him, so that he could buy more time.
Buy time for what?
Well, Jesus was preparing his closest followers for the greatest surprise yet. Jesus claimed that Israel's God was coming to rule over his people not through coercion or violent force, but through self-giving love as he was going to die for their sins.
But his death wasn't the end.
Right. He said that his death would be like a tiny seed buried in the ground. But then it would grow and produce a crop with many seeds.
So these parables, they explain who Jesus was and what he was up to.
And the Gospel authors have preserved these parables so that now every generation of Jesus' followers can read and ponder them.
And imagine how God's kingdom is still at work even today.
Right. These ancient parables are still full of new surprises and challenges. They're like a storehouse packed with treasures, some that are new, some that are old, and it's all just waiting to be discovered.